I just gobbled down hot Chinese and could be trouble.
Yeah, but later tonight, uh, some double happiness. I hope it won't take that long tonight. I'm guessing somewhere between nine o'clock. Probably closer to eight.
That was my guess too.
Let me ask you this. On the, the, when we're down in River Lights, that's not even changed. It's, I mean, there's that, um, development agreement. And is that something that the?
You're, we're being recorded now, just these.
Okay. Well, I'm just curious what it is. What's the, was that a document executed originally between the city and the development?
In the mid 20s, yeah.
So there's being asked for a modification of?
Right. Well, it's a really complex zoning, uh, and, uh, there's certain timing between rollouts and all sorts of things. So any time they want to amend its process, uh, the, uh, the, 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 the beginning. But it's from, from my perspective, it's not surprising to have, uh, a real place to, 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 to. You're sure you can't tell. It's still a sort of commercial.
If he comes back with a CD, would that be a new request? Good. Alright, so, sorry, that was just trying to keep this from going forward messy later. We wanted to make sure we got the answer. So it sounds like yes, you can, we can ask the Planning Commission for a continuance until December, and Megan will work with you on the details to make sure it's all ironed out correctly. So, okay. Do any of the Planning Commission members have an issue with a continuance of item number two to allow Mr. Dufray to come back with a CD zoning modification? And if not, I would entertain a motion on his request to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue Agenda Item Number Two to honor before the December 2nd meeting, I believe.
Okay.
Let me just make sure. Yes, December 2nd.
Alright, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hovis to continue Item Number Two until the December 2nd 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Do we have a second for that?
Second, Cortez.
We have a second by Commissioner Cortez, and we will now call the role Commissioner Hovis.
Yes.
Commissioner Cortez.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodruff.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Collier, yes. So that that motion would carry seven to zero for continuance. So if you will work with Megan, she will get you all taken care of and help you along that process.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Alright, that will conclude Item Number Two for this evening, and Mr. Attorney, I ask that I am recused from Item Number Three, and that we turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe we need a motion and a vote on that real quickly, and then Mr. Hovis will be acting chair.
I'd like to make a motion to recuse Chairman Collier for this item.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to recuse me from the item. Jeff was supposed to do that, but we're all good. We got it. Alright.
Just to be, to keep it on the, so we have Commissioner Lyle. Can I get a second from someone else in the group, please?
Second.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I'll do the roll call, so it'll be official. See, this is why you don't do this, but Commissioner Lyle?
Lyle, yes.
Commissioner Cortez?
Cortez, yes.
Commissioner Woodruff?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hovis says yes. So you are recused. For Agenda Item Number Three, prior to starting, this item is a little out of the ordinary and irregular for the process. I'll go ahead and read the item, but then ask for our attorney to sort of outline the process for us. This is a conditional district modification, modifying an existing conditional district for property containing 1,358.72 acres, parcel R07000-006-009-000, located at 4410 River Road, to rezone the portion of the site from R7CD residential conditional district to MXCD mixed-use conditional district, or a master plan mixed-use center. There is also, that's item, that's number A, I mean, Component A, and then Component B is a development agreement amendment, proposal to modify provision of an existing development agreement to remove the limit of the number of residential units across the project, remove the limit on the reallocation of the residential units between phases, and to adjust the timing and scope of the completion of the transportation improvements. And then I'll ask that our attorney sort of outline the process for this item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Procedurally, there will be two presentations. Even though we have two items, they're somewhat intertwined. Staff will make a presentation, followed by the applicant presentation, and at the conclusion of that, if the matter proceeds to a vote, we will have a vote on Item A, followed by a vote on Item B. So in a nutshell, we're going to have one hearing covering both items, and then we'll have two separate votes. And if there are any questions about that, raise your hand. I will do the best I can to answer them. Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, we'll continue. Brian Chambers will do their staff report.
Vice Chair Hovis, members of the Planning Commission. This request is to modify the existing conditional district and development agreement for the River Lights master plan development. River Lights includes approximately 1,358 acres located between Bernard's and Motts Creek, Motts Creeks along the Cape Fear River. This map shows the site in the context of surrounding area. And I have several photos of the property from River Road. The top left will be the southern roundabout of Lorraine Drive, and the bottom right would be just north of Motts Creek, looking north. On May 19th of 2009, the City Council approved a voluntary annexation for River Lights and approved an initial rezoning of R7CD residential conditional district for 1,155 acres of this property, and an MXCD mixed-use conditional district for 203 acres of the property. On June 10th of 2009, a development agreement was executed between the city and the developer, which is Newland. On March 5th of 2013, and on February 16th of 2016, City Council approved modifications to the conditional district and development agreement. And again, on March 15th, 2018, City Council approved an amended and restated development agreement between the city and Newland. A summary of these amendments can be found on Page Two of the staff report that you have. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of those, but there's a lot of, a lot of details in all those amendments, and I didn't want to get bogged down on that, but I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have on those. The applicant is proposing to modify the existing conditional district to rezone a portion of the site from R7CD residential to MXCD mixed-use conditional district for a master plan mixed-use center. What you see on the screen in front of you is the existing master plan, and the top right of the screen that's outlined in red would be the area that the applicant is requesting to rezone from the R7CD, which is a single-family cluster development, to the MXCD mixed-use for a mixed-use center. This is the proposed master plan for this mixed-use area. Preliminary site assessment is required to establish any new MX district. The applicant has provided documentation, which would be Attachment Eight, and a site plan, which would be Attachment Nine in your pockets that shows how this satisfies that requirement. The mixed-use district also requires a minimum mixture of uses made up of the following categories, which would include residential, office, commercial, institutional, and entertainment lodging. The proposed master plan includes a mixture of uses that does satisfy this requirement. Traffic data indicates that Independence Boulevard, River Road, Lorraine Drive, and Sanders Road are all operating within their design capacity this time. The trip generation data indicates that the uses allowed under current development agreement, when compared to the proposed uses, would result in a decrease in the overall estimated vehicle trips generated by the overall River Lights development. The applicant also proposes to modify certain provisions of the existing development agreement. This would be the maximum number of residential units across the project, to remove the limit on the reallocation of residential units between phases, and then adjust the timing and scope for the completion of the required transportation improvements. The current development agreement limits the overall residential density of River Lights to 2,290 units, and the overall commercial square footage to 1 million square feet. The current development agreement includes a provision to allow for an increase in residence density to a maximum of 2,790 units, with an equivalent reduction in overall commercial square footage. The conversion factor in the current development agreement allows for an additional single-family dwelling in exchange for a 500-square-foot reduction in allowable commercial space, and an additional townhome unit in exchange for a 300-square-foot reduction in commercial space. The applicant proposes to amend the development agreement to remove the overall density limit lie on this conversion factor to limit the overall density to allow for the proposed mixed-use center. The current development agreement also has a maximum of 25% of allowable residential density to be transferred between development phases. The agreement also recognizes that no individual phase can exceed the buy rate density of the underlying zoning district. The applicant proposes to remove this 25% transfer provision. Staff believes that since these individual tracks will be limited to the overall density that would be allowed anyways, we don't see that this provision is necessary, so we are in support of the removal of this. And then finally, the current development agreement identifies the Phase One and Phase Two transportation improvements that are required for the overall build-out of River Lights. The proposed amendment would remove those improvements that have been completed or deemed no longer necessary, and then it establishes a timeline for the completion of the remaining items. City's traffic engineering staff and transportation planning staff have reviewed the proposed development agreement amendments, and believe that they adequately address our traffic concerns and the necessary transportation improvements. The site is identified as within an area of opportunity, and River Road is considered a community parkway, as identified on our Crete Wilmington Comprehensive Growth Strategies map. The plan encourages mixed-use centers and new and traditional development patterns. The plan calls for mixed-use development, provides a range of services near integrated residential development to help reduce motor vehicle trips, and reduce the reliance on single occupancy motor vehicles. The plan also supports integration and mix of uses that contribute to the city's livability, manage future growth, and provide bicycle, pedestrian, transit accessible destinations. The proposed modification for this evening allows for a new mixed-use center to be created that will provide a variety of uses and a range of housing types in the area. The proposed mixed-use center will provide access to services for the residential uses to be developed as part of this proposed development, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods. Staff believes this request is consistent with our comprehensive plan, the city's adopted focus areas, that this request is reasonable, and in the public interest, and recommends conditional approval. I would be happy to answer any questions you have, and the applicant, I believe, is prepared to make a presentation as well this evening.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Chambers at this time? Mr. Woodruff?
Just real quick, there was one other number I didn't see in your presentation, an increase where the possible max units was 2,790, it goes up to 3,350. Is that correct?
The, can you point out where that might have been? I don't think.
It's in the amendment, like on maybe the second page of it. I had the page. In Page Four of the amendment, it's Attachment Seven to our packet. I mean, the existing number as it is right now was, there could be, no matter how they did it, as I understand it, the max units would be 2,790, but they're asking for an increase by deleting that number and just putting in its place the number 3,350.
Oh, that is what's in there? I would have to, okay, I'm getting confirmation from the attorney's office that that number is being replaced with 3,350, so I apologize. And this would be the result of the conversion of the commercial space to allow for that increase up to 3,350?
Right. I mean, I understand, they still have to, they don't necessarily gonna do it, it takes a conversion aspect of all that stuff, but the number has substantially increased from the very beginning when it was 2,200, I think, from day one, then it went to 27, now it's up to 33. I just wanted to be sure everyone's aware of that, but, okay, thanks.
Yes, sir, and I apologize for that oversight.
No problem.
Alright, is there another, any other questions for Brian at this time? Alright?
A quick question. Does that change anything in Table Five on Page Six of our staff report? The trip generation, or the intensity column?
The Table Five on Page Six represents the land use, as the land uses as approved under the current development agreement, and then it provides a summary of the analysis of the land uses that are being proposed in the new mixed-use center. It doesn't go one for one, there's not 3,350 units in that table. This table was provided by the applicant to show us what they had planned for the property, and that's what would be included in the development agreement and tied to the TIA.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else? Alright, thank you, Mr. Chambers.
Thank you.
I will ask if the applicant would like to present?
Good, good evening. My name is Michael Lee, I'm with Lee Case, and I represent the applicant tonight. Sorry, I've got a bunch of stuff here. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening, and I apologize in advance, gonna be kind of be looking back and forth since the screen is back here, and some of y'all are here and there, so I'm here on behalf of the River Lights development, and as you've heard from Mr. Chambers, this has been a development that's been gone for quite some time under a development agreement. And given his staff report and the presentation that he made, we may see some slides I may just skip over, so I'm not redundant. So the first thing I want to do is kind of introduce you to River Lights, and there are two folks here, Nick Casala, who's the VP of Operations, and Kenny Johnson, who really handles all the construction-related and horizontal-related development type work, and if we have some technical questions, I may ask Kenny to come up here and speak with us. And since, I know some of y'all have lived with this for years, because you've been involved in the Planning Commission for some time, but I know others haven't, so I just want to reintroduce Newland Communities. When Newland first came, they really had a focus on the environment and low-impact design, and whenever Newland went into a project, they really had three cornerstone principles, and that was when they started this project, and that still maintains today. That's creating a sense of place or home. It involves healthy living systems and innovation, and you see this throughout the development. The healthy living systems and the environment, you can see when they developed the project originally, for those of you who have lived here a long time, you remember River Road went all the way down on the river, and it really bifurcated certain wetland pockets. So they originally were going to move the road kind of to the middle of the project, because that makes sense, a spine road running down the middle, and then they realized when looking at the land that there were these 40 to 60-foot sand ridges. It's just completely different than anything we have in North Carolin, or, excuse me, southeastern North Carolina, in particular, Hanover County. So they ended up moving the road even further away from the river, and then created wildlife corridors, and you can see that in the open space, in the green areas that go between some of the phases, so that wildlife can come to and from the river unobstructed and have access. And that was just something they did, because that's really the way they were developing this particular project, and the way they developed a lot of the projects. So just to kind of give you some background, I know that you've got a very detailed background in your packet, and you've got a brief summary, but just to kind of run through development agreements, a lot of times, the best way to think about a development agreement is it's essentially a rezoning with conditions, and the development agreement is essentially a list of conditions. And the reason that it takes the form of a development agreement is really statutory, and it's projects that are large-scale projects developed over a length of time. When the statute was first passed, it really dealt with these large horizontal developments, and so it required an acreage minimum, which obviously Newland met. That has changed over time, and now development agreements are also for large-scale face projects that are smaller in scope but very, very dense. So that's why we're here today. This development agreement has to be approved by statute in the same way that a rezoning is, so it comes to you here at the Planning Commission, and then we'll go to City Council after that point. So you can see the master plan map, you can see the MX kind of at the bottom of your screen, Mr. Chambers already mentioned it, and then you can see kind of on the top right, or the top of the screen, what we're looking at, what's currently a residentially zoned area to move to a mixed-use. I'm not going to run through this entire list verbatim, but I think it's important to note, and there's more than this in the development agreement, but there is a significant amount of planning that went into this project, from parks to dedication of right-of-way, a significant amount of right-of-way, constructing River Road, in addition to the pavement for the areas where you see on River Road where it's just one lane on either side that's divided, you'll see even a broader scope of right-of-way that's not only been dedicated, but has been constructed from a subgrade perspective, so that when, in the future, when the city comes through and wants to add additional lanes, that subgrade has already been constructed. There's an incredible multi-use path, there's a boardwalk down along what's the MX parcel now, which provides access to the public, really to interact with the river, and that was one of the really big issues when Newland came.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Chair, technically, the five-minute presentation has expired. I think in light of the complexity, the magnitude, the significance of this project, you as the chairman have the latitude to extend the time to whatever you feel is appropriate?
Yeah, I believe so, plus with the two parts, I figure it would be expanded because of that, too.
So today, we're going to just talk briefly about the current zoning, the proposed zoning, and then the four factors that you have to consider in a rezoning, because not only do we have the development agreement, we've got this concept of a traditional rezoning. So just the location, as Brian explained to you, I'm not going to be labor this, you can see the large parcel in the yellow, and the focus parcel for the MX rezoning is in orange, just a little bit closer, so you can see the new MX parcel will be a bookend and provide a really much-needed mixed-use and commercial area on that end of River Road. The tract allocation, so it's kind of hard to see on the map, and I don't have a pointer that I'm aware of, but if you see, it really is just moving density from one section to another, you can see the black dotted lines, that the guardrails there are, we can't exceed the overall cap, and you can't exceed the density provided in the code for that particular zoning designation. The conversion factor, so I just put up these kind of examples, the original development agreement, the current development agreement with a conversion factor, if Newland were to go up to the 2,790, what that would mean as far as a range of commercial, and then if Newland came up to the 3,350, what that would mean as a range of commercial. I say a range because the formula provides 500 or 300 square feet, depending on whether we're talking about single-family or multifamily, so it's not really quite possible to get to an exact number, and we're talking about a range. And this is actually just kind of a red line out of the development agreement itself. So this is where it is on the current master plan that we already talked about. Here's kind of the focus parcel adjacent to Motts Creek, the dark green area is intended to be a park space to be dedicated to the city of Wilmington. This slide kind of evidences to you, you can see in the top left, you've got the Walmart, just to the right of the Walmart that I haven't highlighted is the Lowe's Grocery Store, the Hope Depot, the Harris Teeter Grocery Store, and you can see how the surrounding area of what hopefully will be this new and next parcel will give folks the opportunity that you see adjacent to that project. In Silvatera, you can kind of see a sea of homes, the ability to interact with a really neat mixed-use project, either coming directly in through Arnold Road, or coming in through Lorraine, which is, you can see kind of to the left of that, the orange designated line right there. Just a little bit closer, you can see at the top of your screen, the intersection with Arnold Road, to the left, you see the roundabout, which is Lorraine, again, giving folks access instead of having to go all the way up to Carolina Beach Road, or come down River Road and go to Saunders, and then up to get to the Harris Teeter. This is, this is in your staff report, so again, I'm not going to kind of go through this, but as required by the MX zoning, you've got to designate the various parcels, and that's what's been done here. You'll notice the top-right parcel is a parcel that's been zoned for either residential, a school, or otherwise, and that's because we're still working with the school system on a dedication of 15 acres for a school site. And on the right, usually I like to put parks in green, it appears in gray, so the bottom right is the park space that will be dedicated to the city. So there are four factors for the approval, you do this all the time, so I'm not going to read them out to you, but I am going to address each one of them because I think it's important. Changing conditions that justify the amendment, this project's been going on since 2006, although it's been in the city since 2009, and every time I come before the Planning Commission City Council, I say, "You are probably going to see me again in a couple of years, because as projects evolve and conditions change, we will need to go back into the development agreement," and it gives the city and the developer the ability to do those things with this particular process. Is it consistent with the future land use plan? River Lights has its own little designation, and it encourages mixed-use, so it seems to dovetail in with what the future land use plan calls for. I'm not sure why this was not originally contemplated, other than the development patterns back at that time maybe didn't provide for MX to be located here, but it certainly makes sense in hindsight, and it's great that we have the ability to modify the development agreement to account for the impacts of an MX in this particular area, and also have it dovetail in with the rest of the River Lights project. Third, expected effect on the neighborhood if it's approved. This really gives direct access to the neighborhoods. It has a school site that is immediately adjacent to a public park, if that's where the school and Newland ended up putting it. It also is very close to Mary C. Williams School, and it's going to help folks not go all the way out to Saunders, or cut through that Silvatera neighborhood to go up to Carolina Beach Road to access what hopefully will be a neighborhood commercial with a grocery store, coffee shop, and those types of uses. And other circumstances which tend to justify in the public interest, you know, it's just MX, you know, a place where you can live, work, and play, internal capture of trips so that we can reduce the number of folks getting on the road to get to essential services. The multi-use path is, I think, eight feet wide and runs along River Road. There's a really good opportunity for people to bike, walk, and run, and end up here to take advantage of the MX facilities instead of it kind of being a sea of completely residential. So kind of in conclusion, we've got our amendment to development agreement. Again, think about that as your conditions to your zoning approval, and then we've got a rezoning of SF10, which is all residential, to MX, and if you have any questions for myself or any of the Newland team, we'd be happy to answer those. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Does any of the commissioners have questions for Mr. Lee at this point? Mr. Woodruff?
Mr. Lee, just relatively quickly, the increase in the maximum residential units from 2,700 up to 3,300 and something, is that based solely on this new zoning for this particular parcel, or is that more of an overall addition to the River Lights project?
It's really overall. The concept when we engaged in it or created this formula initially some years ago, was how could we have some flexibility as how could we have some flexibility as market demanded with commercial and residential without increasing the impact? And the way we thought about it at that time was to create this conversion factor. And it was actually a pretty conservative one, based in large part on traffic, where if we needed to, we could have this flexibility to give up some commercial and increase the residential. And so what you're seeing, and I think someone mentioned it, isn't a foregone conclusion. That's exactly what's happening. It really is to just kind of address with market demand what's going on today. You know, this project has been through the Great Recession in 2008 and now through what we're experiencing today. So this kind of flexibility enables Newland to be a little bit more nimble in the way that they're developing the project for end users.
So this project, or this particular parcel, that Freziology is used as neighborhood commercial, you could actually give up some of this intended commercial use to create more residential units?
Right now, the commercial entitlement is a million square feet. That's the equivalent of 10 Super Walmarts or 20 Lowe's Home Centers. So it's a significant amount of commercial that was originally planned for the project. As time has changed and this area of the community has developed, it seems like that there's more of a need for the MX to integrate the commercial and residential. And there are other opportunities. What originally planned on being a single-family type of project has now changed a little bit more in the fact of there's multifamily and all the multifamily was contemplated originally. This kind of gives more flexibility as they move through that development timeline.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions at this point for Mr. Lee? Mr. Sharp?
When you had the earlier amendment, taking the number of units from 2,290 to 2,790, was there any conversion on the million square foot of commercial?
So that was the conversion, in fact. So if you think about it in the context right now that we've got, nothing has changed with the conversion other than the cap. So the bank of commercials, a million, we have 2,290 units. And then as you draw down on the bank of commercial, you can increase the number of units.
I understand that. What is your, before this Second Amendment, what is your bank of commercial left?
You mean, how much commercial do we have right now on the ground?
No. How much commercial did you have that you could convert? You originally started at a million. You added 2,290 to 2,790. That's a 500. And was there a conversion on that?
So the conversion formula is there. So we have a million square feet and 2,290 units. The conversion factor in the amendment allowed for the commercial to come down and then the residential go up to 2,790, but they have not converted anything yet.
So what is in the bank on commercial, assuming that those 500 units will be converted? What has the, what has the million dropped to?
Yes, sir. Can I go back to the slide that, there's a slide with a chart on it and that kind of gives examples. I think that's what he's asking. It'll be easier to see visually than... So in this slide, if you look in the middle, I think you're asking about the green, 750 to 850 of commercial in the bank if it was developed out to the 2,790. If they develop the maximum 3,350, they would have to convert down to 470 to 682, depending on whether, what the mix is of single-family and multifamily. I think that was the question.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, my sound cut off. I couldn't hear your, if you answered, I couldn't hear you.
Sure. So the green, I think, the green bar in the middle of the screen, I think represents your question. At 2,790 units, what would the bank of commercial left be? It's going to be approximately 750 to 850, depending on the mix of those 500 units of whether they're single-family or multifamily, whether the 300 square feet or the 500 square feet of commercial that's reduced.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone else have any questions? All right. Seeing that we have none, thank you, Mr. Lee. We'll be asking for some questions probably later. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. We'll ask those that are, would like to speak in favor at this time. Okay, all right. Seeing it none, we do have a few emails. I'll read those in to the record. First one is from Donald Anderson, states, "There is a tree line running under the Duke Power line paralleling Mott's Creek from River Road to Duke Powers Substation. I do hope that the tree line will not be disturbed." Next one is from Phil Fierer. His states, "As nearby homeowners, may we be assured that the developer, in making rezoning requests, agree to follow whatever ordinances the city has for retail/commercial construction like Cluster Number Five are, period, then are construction crews restricted to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM? What about weekends, overnight via portable floodlights, et cetera? I am sure that there must be some standard to ensure neighborhood homes aren't subjected to noisy nights and weekends." Next one is from Michael San Clemente. "The applicant held a public hearing at River Lights Amenity Center in July. I spoke to the engineer, developer, and others representing various parts of the application. While the presentation was informative, I raised questions that were not answered. First, I asked the engineer if there would be an environmental impact study. The answer was no, since it was done in 2007. Thirteen years later, and many homes and apartments have changed the environment. Another environmental impact study should be done. This development will have an impact on the buffer and wetlands by Mott's Creek. I asked about stormwater drainage and the increase in impervious coverage of this property. The answer was no drainage issues since the land is mostly sand. A development this size should have detailed stormwater management plan. I ask if a traffic study has been done and if the study includes traffic accidents on River Road. The answer was this information would be on the Wilmington Planning Commission's website. The Planning Commission should consider the business development in this application and that this timing is right for this type of business application. Since COVID-19 hit us early this year, many businesses are struggling to stay in business and many have closed for good. This application should be delayed until business in Wilmington and along River Road returns to normal. As far as I know, no environmental impact study, stormwater management plan, and traffic study has been available to the public for review. The applicant should release these reports to the public for review so that we can fairly judge this application and give the commission our views and input." The next one is from Donald and Lula Williams. "I received a letter informing me of the hearing regarding conditional rezoning modification. I'm a property owner within 300 feet of the proposed change for 4410 River Road. My main concern is traffic, excuse me, my main concern is traffic will increase, which could affect the condition of River Road. Who will be responsible for repairing and upkeep of River Road?" And that is the only ones I have. Are there any others that have come in, Amy, at this time? All right. All right. Being that we have no other person in the public hearing, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Ask if the applicant wants to come back up for any rebuttal or additional information?
Not unless there's any further questions. Thank you very much.
Let me ask the commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? All right. Very good. All right. We will, since we're at this point, we'll go for discussion and entertain. And as we talked earlier, there are two different votes that we will take. We'll need two motions and a vote, a vote in that order. So regarding item A, yes, Mr. Sharp?
I have a question for staff. I wondered if Brian could come up and answer a question for me. Mr. Chair?
He's on his way to the public.
Yes, sir.
This MX proposal that is, that is being proposed, whole blocks of, or tracks are being delineated roughly. And if I understand, the caps on those tracks, the density can be transferred by this proposal within the varying tracks. Is that my understanding?
Just so I'm clear, you're asking if the transfer between the tracks within the newly proposed MX?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That MX area would be subject to the master plan and the entire master plan would have to show compliance with the MX district standards.
And it doesn't really matter where and which track the densities are put, as long as it maintains within the framework of the development agreement?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. So when Mr. Lee and I spoke earlier this week, I asked the question, why could affordable housing not be included in these additional units that are being proposed in the conversion? And he said that the Newland are land development organizations on our, they sell these tracks to other developers to develop housing units. Is that, does that make sense?
I probably hasn't informed the applicant on that.
Okay.
How they move forward with development, whether they still...
So my question then becomes, is this the last time that a condition could be put on these tracks of land where the, a developer, Newland, or whoever he sells them to, could include affordable housing into the 3,350 units within the district, within the development agreement?
It would only be the last time if they never came back for another modification. So if this is the last time you see it, then yes, the answer to that is yes.
Okay. So then I guess I have a question for the applicant.
All right. Mr. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lee, thank you very much for the information you provided and your patience with my questions. What I understand is that the number of units in River Light is being requested to be added at 560 units, that these 500, additional 560 units will be apportioned into the MX project. And that these tracks of land that are being identified conceptually in this proposal will be sold to other developers. So I ask, with this consideration of 560 units, would it be possible to condition that some nominal amount, 10% of the additional units, be workforce or affordable housing? And I guess I didn't understand why development that is so well-being done, who has built-in flexibility for the last 12 years, that is enhanced neighborhood and a positive development for Wilmington, wouldn't also step up and deal with our new current issue?
Just clarify one thing before I answer your question. The residential units can be used anywhere in the entirety of the master plan, not just within the MX. Your question as to whether workforce or affordable housing units, whether we could agree to be required to do that, I don't think we can at this time. I know that some of the end users have utilized programs on their own for those particular projects, but not as essentially a mandatory item.
No, I wasn't suggesting mandatory and we know the law. I was wondering whether willingly and voluntarily, some portion of the additional units, 560 of them being requested in this proposal, could be targeted for workforce or affordable housing?
And we've talked about that. We actually talked about it even before last year when we started working on this. At this time, that's something, not something we can agree to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Since Mr. Lee is up, does anyone else have a question for Mr. Lee? All right. Going back into discussing, we have an item before us. Is there anyone that has a motion related to this matter? For, and this would be for the item for A of this. Yes, sir.
Mr. Hobbis, as we went through this and as I was looking at Mr. Lee's slide presentation, it would be my request, and technically it's semantics at this point because this matter will ultimately go to City Council, but if we could do B first, that would be my preference, followed by A. That would be the amendment because technically, if the, you know, it's chicken and the egg type thing, if that makes sense, I'd have to go into more detail, but that'd be my preference.
Thank you. That is fine with me. We'll consider item 3B at this time. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Three, Portion B, which is for a development agreement modification. And that 4410 River Road, and that this request is consistent with the objectives and policies and following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington, Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. And the Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable in the public interest based on the following conclusions. Proposed rezoning will allow for a new mixed-use center to be created that would include a variety of uses and a range of housing types and would provide access to services for nearby residents. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommends approval of this request. And Mr. Attorney, I would think that the nine conditions on page 12 run with the Portion A and that there are no special conditions with the Portion B. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bowman's made a motion. Do I have anyone that would make a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cortez has seconded that. Being the case, I'll call, or call vote. Commissioner Lyle?
Lyle, yay.
Commissioner Cortez?
Yay.
Commissioner Woodruff?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Commissioner Hobbis? The item passes. Management, we'll move now to voting on, and I need a motion for Agenda Item 3A. Mr. Bowman?
I guess I'll carry it through then. I motion to approve Agenda Item Three, 4410 River Road, Portion A, which is to modify an existing conditional district rezon, portion of the site from R7CD Residential Conditional District to MXCD Mixed Use Conditional District for a master plan, mixed-use center. And that the approval of this request is consistent with the objectives and policies and the following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington, Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. The Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the following conclusions. Proposed rezoning... Proposed rezoning will allow for a new mixed-use center to be created that would include a variety of uses and a range of housing types and would provide access to services for nearby residents, including the conditions, nine conditions from page 12 of the staff report. And staff or applicant can confirm if they have accepted those nine conditions.
All right.
We are receiving a head nod from Mr. Lee confirming applicant's acceptance of those conditions.
And just to confirm, Mr. Bowman, the latter part of yours was the proposed rezoning will allow for the new mixed-use center to be created?
Oh, yeah. Well, sorry, I got my, some of that language crossed up with the portion number. Well, this is item A, so this is the mixed, this is the zoning item.
We, because since we switched them around, correct me, Mr. Sharp, if I'm wrong, but.
My consistency statement on item B may have included some superfluous language that would suit me if they just elect to strike that, but I defer to attorney on this.
Mr. Bowman, I think your current motion for item A is good. And regarding your question to item B, there was a separate consistency statement for B that had a different sentence, first sentence, and then the balance of it was the same, I think. And I apologize to everyone, we did send out, we started off with a single consistency statement for item three, and shortly before the meeting.
I never got a second one, sorry.
Sent out a revision to that, so I apologize about that. Regarding, regarding item A that we're addressing now, I believe the consistency statement that you read is good for that. So if we want to proceed with that, that'd be fine. And then I'll go back and address the first one after we do that.
Okay.
I'll second.
Commissioner Lyle will second that. Thank you for that. We'll do a call and a vote. Commissioner Lyle?
Yea.
Commissioner Cortez?
Yea.
Commissioner Woodruff?
Before I vote, just want to say I do believe the city has missed an opportunity for workforce housing, as Mr. Sharp has pointed out. But that being said, I vote yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Nay.
That being the case, we have a five to one, and that item passes. That being the end of this item, we will ask for Commissioner Collier to come back.
Could we clarify the consistency statement on 3B?
Yes, sir. Let's address that real quick, if that's okay, Mr. Hobbis. Mr. Curry, do you stand by for a minute? Resume your seats, fine, but.
Yeah, I don't see.
What may have happened, and I do not want to put words in your mouth, but if this is accurate, you can just confirm it. I think you may have read 3A for 3B. And is that accurate?
Yes, on the closing statement. I know about the development agreement, and that included language on the proposed rezoning, which is really applying to the first part or the other part.
Yes, sir. In light of that, is the commission satisfied with it as read, or would you like to do, just reopen and take a second vote on it and read the consistency statement again with that additional sentence in it?
Well, if you're, if you're asking me, would I like to amend the consistency statement to what it should be, I don't have that, you know, if there's specific language you want included, I don't have a copy to read. It's not in my email, so I only got one item, one consistency statement for item three.
I do apologize about that. We did try to send that out right before the meeting.
I mean, if you want to tell me the language, then I can agree to it. I mean, just, I'm not sure how germane it is to the action, but I'm happy to amend how it be like.
So which resolution, which sets the cap up to 3,350? 3A or 3B?
3B, which has been voted on.
Well, can we go back on 3B and clarify the consistency statement?
That one was correct.
No, it was, it was, that's the, if it's 3B that sets the record at cap at 3,350, then, then.
That was 3A, because that was in the development agreement, which is what y'all wanted to do first.
Yes, 3B was read, the consistency statement matched the item on the agenda and in the packet. It was number, the second item, which was 3A that we voted on. There was a difference in Mr. Bowman's last portion of the statement. So take the advice of the attorney if we should. With him not having access to this, we can make a revision how you'd like to best handle that.
Mr. Bowman, we did just attempt to resend the consistent statement just now.
Okay, I get it.
Okay, thank you. And just to, and I apologize, Mr. Sharp, but just to clarify the confusion I created, I requested that we proceed on B for, B first, which was the adjustment to the development agreement, and you were correct. That's the portion that deals with the adjustment in the residential units. You were correct about that, and I misspoke, so I apologize about that.
So the bottom line is that I voted against the wrong half. I'm in favor of mixed use. I think it's an excellent development. I just think that the cap was given away without a consideration for workforce or affordable housing. I was trying to make that statement. So I voted wrongly on both ones because of the consistency statement. Is that what we're saying?
I think I probably created the confusion.
I'm not looking for fault, I'm looking for clarity, okay? I'm just, you know, I'm tripping over my own feet and trying to get this straight.
Mr. Bowman, do you have the new consistency statement for?
Running through my spam filter right at the moment. You got to practice safe computing. It usually just takes one or two minutes, but.
Mr. Bowman, would you?
I just wanted to point out, in case he's confused, in case you're confused at home, one of the issues is the request is not on the top of the consistency statement, like sometimes we see. So we, and we have in front of us here, the 3A and 3B, they're two different consistency statements, but neither one of them has a request written at the top. So we have to refer back to the agenda items, so you can see which one we're on. But we did do B first, but it was the development agreement first. And in Commissioner Bowman's defense, he did start out his consistency statement saying that it was the development agreement. So I think that was pretty clear what he was, his intent there. He got that done, even though he didn't have that in front of him.
Okay, I, my problem is, my main computer that has the thing that you sent me, 1.7 megabytes, relates to the duplex project with photographs attached, and there's only one attachment.
So that we can, so we could be clear, Mr. Bowman, and this could be, we could go back and ask for a new motion, and we may have to have someone else make that motion based on not having access or.
Perfectly okay with me.
Okay, let's, let's go, as long as that's appropriate, and, okay, we'll go back in.
No problem, I agree.
We'll go for item number 3A. I would ask to see if anyone can make a motion related to this, this item. Three.
3B.
B.
We voted on B first.
Correct, with the incorrect.
But I think the, for 3, for 3A, it was, it's the proposed rezoning that would allow a mixed-use center to be created. And it would intend, include a variety of uses and range of housing types and would provide access to services for nearby residents. That's the one for A.
That's correct.
Okay, and I believe that was sent out just recently, and I think that's the one you have for A.
Right, the 3A is the one we did second, and it was correct. We have to repeat 3B that we did first. Am I following that?
Yeah, that's correct.
So do you need a motion on 3A?
I got it. I got B. We're done with A. We're going back to B. Regarding agenda item 3B, 4410 River Road, the development agreement amendment. We, the Planning Commission recommends approval. This request is consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington, the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the City of Wilmington Strategic Plan. The Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the following conclusions. The proposed amendment to the development agreement will permit the rezoning considered in item 3A, considered on this date, to be implemented to allow a new mixed-use center to be created that would include a variety of uses and a range of housing types and would provide access to services for nearby residents. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommends approval of this request.
And just verifying that is correct from our attorney.
Happy to.
Thank you very much. That was the consistency statement for 3B and the motion. We're now ready for a second. And Mr. Sharp, this is in regard to B, which is the amendment to the development agreement.
No, Sean, no. What Ms. Lyles just read was the sheet we all got earlier today, and that only deals with the rezoning.
So we voted on 3B first, and that was a consistency statement that was read by Mr. Bowman.
Okay.
It is very similar, but the addition that you don't have on the one you received today, it started out the proposed amendment to the development agreement.
That's correct. Thank you.
That being the case, then, so that's been verified, I'll ask for a second for that item. Mr. Bowman? All right, there's been a motion and a second. We'll go do a roll call vote again. Commissioner Lyle?
Yea.
Yea. Commissioner Cortez?
Yea.
Commissioner Woodruff?
Yea.
Commissioner Bowman? I'm sorry, you're muted, Mr. Bowman.
Sorry, yea.
And Commissioner Sharp?
Nay.
And Commissioner Hobbis is yea. That is five to one, that the item passes. That, after that extremely confusing item, I'm hoping, just to clarify, we are good at this point to move on?
Wrong.
Okay, happily. Welcome back, Mr. Collier.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate you standing in, Jeff. Thank you, thank you a lot for that. All right, the next item on our agenda is item number four, which is an appeal of a subdivision review board decision. The applicant requests to withdraw their appeal of a preliminary plan approval for the construction of private streets and utilities located at 111 Warehouse Lane and 3804 Market Street. The site is currently zoned MFMH CD, which is multifamily, median, high-density commercial district. And Brian Chambers will provide us the staff report on this item. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I do not have a presentation on this. If you recall, this item came before you as a conditional zoning request a couple months back. It also had to get SRB approval for the new roads. Following the SRB meeting, the neighbors provided an application to appeal that approval. And this was, this occurred prior to the item going to city council and getting, ultimately getting approved. And during that time, the applicant worked with the neighbors to lay their concerns and provided some alternatives that they were satisfied with. So they wanted to withdraw that, this request for the appeal. And the way our code is structured, it requires this commission to accept that withdrawal.
Okay. Brian, thank you very much. Does everyone understand that, that we are, all we are doing is voting upon a withdrawal, a client's request of a withdrawal of an application? So in that light, may I have a motion for the withdrawal?
A move to withdrawal, item number four?
All right, we have a motion to approve the withdrawal by Commissioner Lyle. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hobbis. So we will go through roll call vote if there are no additional questions. Commissioner Bowman?
Yea.
Commissioner Woodruff?
Yea.
Commissioner Cortez?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
Aye.
Commissioner Lyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Hobbis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Collier, yes. So the withdrawal of item number four passes seven to zero. Onto our last item of the evening, which is agenda item number five. And this is a conditional district rezoning of property containing 1.757 acres. And this property is located at 1121 South Front Street, 1112 South Second Street, 101, 104, 108, 112, 114, 115, and 116 Marstella Street, from Light Industrial District to R3 Central City Residential District, and changing those all to UMX Urban Mixed Use District, Conditional District, to allow the redevelopment of the properties and preserve a historic brick warehouse. And Mr. Jeff Walton will be the planner for this item. Mr. Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On September 1, 2020, city council reviewed a general rezoning of the subject properties to UMX Urban Mixed Use District. And at the meeting, they noted concern for preserving the existing historic warehouse that's on site. At the applicant's request, the city council loads to remand the item back to this board to consider a conceptual site plan and rezoning of the subject properties to a conditional district rezoning. Tonight, the applicant proposes to rezone the properties from Light Industrial and Center City Residential to UMX Urban Mixed Use District, Conditional District, to allow redevelopment of the subject properties and to preserve a historic brick warehouse. The subject sites include a total of eight parcels, three larger parcels to the north of Marstella, as well as five parcels to the south of Marstella Street. This image gives you the general context of where this property is located. This is a sandmore map from 1915. According to the National Register, the brick warehouse known as the Bear Soul Winery was built in 1913 and is a contributing building. The nomination for the states that the building appears to have little alteration from its original appearance. Some photos of the warehouse itself and of the buildings on the subject site. These are some of the adjacent pictures, including the Tang Farms that are on South Front Street. The comprehensive plan shows that the site is in a post-industrialization and inner-city revitalization area of opportunity and located in the, at the intersection of Special Character and Community Connector Street types. The plan defines historic preservation as the essence of Wilmington, as a southern port city, and preservation is critical in shaping Wilmington's future urban form. The proposed UMX rezoning has the potential to meet many of these design priorities. The South Side Small Area Plan supports the UMX zoning on the northern side of Marstella and maintaining the existing residential. and maintaining the existing residential lot development on the south side. The plan encourages preservation of buildings located within the National Register and to pursue landmark designation for significant historic structures. The existing Bear Soul Winery building is considered a historic, significant historic structure. The proposal is, is consistent with many of these policies of the South Side Small Area Plan. Staff believes the proposed conditional district amendment is generally consistent with Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the city's adopted focus areas, the South Side Small Area Plan. We have the request as reasonable and in the public interest, we recommend conditional approval. The applicant is here tonight to make a brief presentation to you as well. And I believe he'll want to clarify condition five in the case summary, where it talks about preservation of the existing brick warehouse, the footprint, and street-facing facades. So he'll, he'll want to clarify that condition before the motion to either approver tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Walton. Are there any questions for Mr. Walton at this time from the Planning Commission?
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you. And if the applicant is here, then prepare for a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Matt Nichols, and I represent the applicants in this rezoning request. And we appreciate your time in making a brief presentation. This will look probably very familiar to you as we were here in August. So I'll move through some of these slides. And as Mr. Walton mentioned, I really think this sort of boils down to the condition that we're agreeing or willing to put on the property. So with that said, I'll move through these quickly, and I'm glad to answer any questions as I go through. Next slide, please. As stated last time, we were here on the general rezoning request. The property consists of eight parcels, five of which are zoned to Light Industrial and three are R-three. Next slide, please. Here's just another vantage point of showing the property and the surrounding properties. Next slide, please. This was our, is our conditional district site plan proposal. And just as you will recall, this commission unanimously recommended a general UMX rezoning. And we have come back with really one condition, and that is to agree not to tear down the, the main building. So that's the condition that we're proposing. And I'll get to the wording of that here in a second, but next slide, please. Just a closer image of the building that we're, here we go, that we're saying that will not be torn down. Next slide, please. And here are the other properties on the south side of Marstella Street. Next slide, please. As Mr. Walton mentioned, as mentioned in the previous hearing, the property is in a growth strategy area of opportunity in the Comprehensive Plan. And next slide, please. And also, in the, the Comprehensive Plan identifies the number of benefits with this post-industrial and inner-city revitalization area of opportunity. Increasing densities, adaptive reuse of buildings. And I think this is a great example of a building that could be repurposed or built upon. And in the, on the far side of the screen is a picture that's in the comp plan that I think is a great example. It actually looks like this building. And one of the ideas that could come along, again, my client does not have a development plan at this time, but you could probably do something pretty, pretty unique and incredible with that building. And again, that photo, I think it's from a different city, obviously, but it's just an example of what you could potentially do on this site. We think the UMX rezoning is, is a lot better than the current light industrial zoning on the property. Next slide, please. So again, the UMX district is consistent with the area. That was gone through in detail at the last hearing. Next slide. And just to put it in context, you can see there's quite a bit of UMX in the area, shown in green on the zoning map. Next slide, please. And again, existing zoning, the majority of the property is light industrial. I think it's significant to note that the streets are already zoned light industrial. Next slide. And then we're proposing UMX on the eight parcels. Next slide, please. You can see to the west is industrial, what we commonly call heavy industrial. We think this will be a better transition toward that. Next slide, please. And the condition that we proposed in the application is that the existing brick warehouse building located at one-oh-one Marstella Street shall not be demolished. Now, the, the condition that staff had proposed, if I could go to the next slide, is stated as follows. The existing historic brick warehouse shall be preserved, including the footprint and all street-facing facades. All street-facing facade historic elements such as windows and trim shall be preserved, and the bricks shall remain unpainted. So we've got some concerns with that language. Next slide, please. And I've sort of highlighted, broke it up into two sentences, and the red text with us equals red flags. One of those, our concern is, what does that mean? Are we going to be in a sort of debate with staff over what preserving the building means? Does that result in us having a disagreement with staff and going to the Board of Adjustment on a code interpretation or interpretation of this district? I don't know. The footprint, not sure what that means. We, we clearly want the ability to add to the footprint. We want to, we don't necessarily want to keep the footprint as is. We'd like the ability to add on to the building. And I think we're being very upfront about that. And the street-facing facades, again, that's, I think the intent is not to alter the two facades. But the facade, for example, now, the, I think the first two levels of windows have bars on the windows. I think we, you know, that's one thing that probably we'd like to take those off. May want to do some things to the exterior, but what we're trying, what we don't want to do is be in a situation where we're essentially in the historic district because we're not. And are we then coming back as if it's HPC-type hearings? And those types of things, I've been involved in them, they can go on a while. It can result in appeals to the Board of Adjustment over differences in window types. And it can be quite a bit of difference in pricing on windows that someone may want to put into their historic home versus what the city would like them to put in there, and then debate over what's historic. And, and keep in mind that any of this is at my client's expense as far as what he would like to do to the building ultimately. He's done a great job of upkeeping it. I think I would defer to Mr. Walton. He's a historic expert on things, but he was, we were talking about how the, he's done a great job with the windows that are there, the, he hasn't painted the brick. But at the same time, we're talking about putting restrictions on it or language that, to me, is open to interpretation. And that's just something we're not used to outside of the historic district, and it's concerning. So we're open to the commission's thoughts on that. But the condition five as written is not something that's agreeable. And I think it boils down to the language in it, the preservation language, the historic elements. Again, more preservation language. It just for us is open to disagreement, equals appeals, equals time, money, lost opportunity. He's not in the historic district. We're across from basically a tank farm at the, with the light industrial across, or I'm sorry, the heavy industrial across the street. So it's, we're, it, it obviously want to do what we understand the city would like us to do is to put a condition on there that the building's not going to be torn down, and it's going to, not going to be torn down for the purpose of putting up a new apartment building or putting up something new. But we certainly want the ability to add on to that building, maybe go up with the building, add to the footprint of the building. I don't think as a practical matter, someone's just going to paint the brick. I just don't think that's, it'd be expensive, and it's really beautiful brick, so. But that's something that, again, those types of conditions, just where does it end? And to what end does it go to? So we hope that you can see it from our standpoint. But we don't want to be in a situation where we're suddenly converted to basically being in the historic district and seeking what is the equivalent of certificates of appropriateness for changes to the building because that's not the, that's not what we're agreeing to. With that said, I'm glad to answer any questions. I think I, I may have a couple more slides, but I think I've covered everything.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Appreciate your presentation as well. Are there questions for Mr. Nichols while he's up at the podium at this point on any clarification of the language at all? Mr. Bowman, I think I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is going to be hard to sort of write on the fly because it's sort of tricky. And do you have language of your own, Mr. Nichols, that you feel is appropriate to replace staff's condition number five or amend it?
Well, I've struggled with that because when I start trying to limit the languages to what we proposed in the application, it just opens more questions. What, where does it end? And so it's been a dilemma. And one thought I had was that the brick warehouse, the existing historic brick warehouse. I'm okay with the word footprint as long as we understand that that means we can expand it. No one's, no one's going to make the building smaller. And that's where I thought the word footprint wasn't even needed. But the street-facing facades shall remain? I don't think we would have a problem with that. But if we want to add on to the top of the building, how, how does that interact with that condition, I guess?
Well, that's, the reason I asked the question is, and you may not be familiar with the detail of this, but in the current line development code, there is, in the central business district, provisions for just this occasion where you have a contributing historic building that's not located in the local designated historic district, and it allows for vertical expansion and selective demolition and other things like that. Now, you know, if, that may still have a little bit of gray area, but it does give you something that's sort of been adopted by the city as sort of a yardstick. But I, I don't think you have really the time to understand the details of this while you're at the podium. So is, is this something that we can get some succinct language on that would, you, you would find acceptable? Such as preserving the majority of the building, or, you know, or allowing for expansion, keeping the two primary street-fronting facades intact? Or can you, can you help us, help steer us to where we can act on this tonight?
Well, it's an important matter. It, it certainly has been going on for a while, but for good reason. So I do appreciate the commission's time, and we are back a second time. And as I said, there's no development plan here, so I wasn't trying to prolong it. And, and, but if a continuance was deemed beneficial, I don't think we're against that. We want to make sure we get it correct. I did want to get guidance from the commission on the city's language versus our language. Maybe there's some in-between that, that's agreeable. But I, I don't want to sort of come up with something on the fly either. So I.
I mean, we, we could go on with the public hearing aspect of this, and maybe I could come up with something that might meet your satisfaction if you feel it important to take action tonight.
I mean, yes, sir. If there's proposed language, we certainly would consider it tonight. And I mean, we'd like to have the application go through the process. But I would defer to the commission on, if more time's beneficial, we're, we're open to having more time.
Okay.
But I think it kind of came down to these two different, sort of differences of opinion. And, and when talking with staff, and Jeff's been great to work with, really has been. Jeff and I have spent a lot of time talking about this project. And when we talk about it, I don't think we're far off. It's just getting it on paper in five, 10 years from now, when maybe someone else is looking at this. It may not be me and Jeff talking about it. It could be, you know, someone else. And we just want to make sure it's clear going forward because we're, we're trying to be as clear as we can be that we, we want the ability to add on to the building. We don't want to really be limited by, we don't want too many limitations on it, but agreeable to keep the building. And, and there's no, there's no restriction on it now. I mean, like, like I said before, I think my clients owned it for close to 30 years. I mean, there's no limitation on the building being torn down today. So I think it's a, it is a big benefit to the city to get the condition that we're proposing also. And on top of that, the UMX is, it's just a, it's a better zone for that property in that location than light industrial. So there's a lot of benefits to this request, even with the condition as we proposed. You, you would be getting UMX. You would be getting a condition that that building's not going to be torn down, and you don't have either of those today.
And I think you're right. I think UMX is certainly a much better zone for this particular property, and preserving the building is much better for everyone involved. So I'm going to ask Mr. Walton to come, come up. I want to just ask him his, to tell us what the condition number five, how it reads in his words or in his, what is meant by the words that he wrote in his condition. And if it is a semantics thing, then maybe a continuance is the best way to go. But I also want to make sure we understand that.
Sure. And it, by all means, the condition that Mr. Nichols proposed, I was wanting to see if they could put it back up on the screen because I think it did cover a lot of the nuances that we're trying to, to protect here. So as I, as I read it, the, the big word here is shall be preserved. And if the language has changed to say shall not be demolished, I still think you're achieving the same goal. It's the slide right before that one.
Yeah, he's got it. Oh, you want to see his, his original language or the?
Yeah, the, the, there it is. Oh, one more back. One more.
Yeah, there.
That one. So that's, that one says the existing brick warehouse located one-oh-one Marstella shall not be demolished. I think that's great. I also don't think it goes far enough because one of the things Mr. Nichols and I have been talking about is the, the most important thing is to preserve the street frontages. But we also want to be able to allow for the building to grow over time. And I think this one would, some, a planner in the future could probably say, well, you can't take out a window, you can't take out a, a door in order to put it in a hallway to do a building addition. So I still think a street-facing facade shall not be demolished is still important here. As far as the other items, the, the windows on this building, as I was telling Matt, these, these windows are very unique to Wilmington. They're mostly found in the warehouses that you find on South Water Street. And most of those windows are not in good shape as these are. And so that's one of the reasons for that condition. But we're amenable to seeing that one be removed if the board moves in that direction. And the last item about brick being painted, I hope no one ever decides to paint this building. But we have seen instances in Wilmington where people do paint brick. One of the ones that I do recall fondly that wasn't in the local historic district, I, I didn't have any power to, to do anything about, but it was the, the former AT&T building from like the turn of the century on the corner of Second and Princess Street, across the street from the Crust Restaurant. They took an entire brick building and painted this all gray color. And so that building, I would have never thought would ever be painted in its lifetime, but someone does want to paint brick if they're serious about it. So we felt that covering this building with a, with a paint would just cover up all the architectural brickwork and detail that this building really contains. And so that was important that we felt. So, but if the, if the Plan Commission does go with their recommendation, I would just really. just really insist upon distinguishing between a street facing facade and the entire building itself.
Jeff, this is Glenn. Thinking about what Matt was speaking of with regard to the footprint and the generality of all street facing facades, I wonder what both parties would feel like if we just deleted the first sentence in the staff's proposed condition and substituted the applicant's statement for the first sentence and keep the second sentence. The second sentence has some specificity of it to it that would eliminate the uncertainty that I think the applicant is concerned about, whereas the first sentence there has a lot of uncertainty built into it. The second sentence is quite specific. So my, again, my point is if we took the applicant's statement and said the building should not be demolished as the first statement and then had the second statement which has the specificity that has certain limits to it, would, how would, how would, how would staff feel about that?
Well, I believe what's highlighted and read in the second sentence is what the applicant has a disagreement with us about. And so it's, if, if they wanted to replace the windows in this building, what would be the process? Right now, the process would be, well, you need to modify your UMX rezoning and come through this process. So I, I think either removing the street facing historic elements item or trying to put some sort of fail safe in, calling if, if practical or if feasible. I know those are words that planners don't like to use, but considering something that, that would allow those items to be replaced in the future is, I believe what he's wanting to talk about, but maybe Mr. Nichols can come up here and clarify that. Any questions?
Yeah, I'd, I would hate to put the restriction on them that they can't replace the windows in the building without coming before planning board and, or planning commission and city council, because after a while that just, that becomes, nor do I want them to go back to a historic preservation approval either. So, Mr. Nichols, can you come beside of him and we can at least all nod together?
This will never go to the HPC. This is in the national register and is not in the local district. So even with this condition, it would never go to the HPC.
I think, I think the worry is that it gets, it gets discussed as if it is, whether it is in there or not. And that's, and that's nothing, that's like you said, later when we're all not here, somebody else can do the same thing. So, Mr. Nichols, if we look at the first, you keep your sentence in the first one where we, we, you don't demolish the building. The second, that second statement there, the first red parts, that's the part that I think that Mr. Walton wants to keep in some level of that to say that you are protecting the, the look of the outside of the building without, in my opinion, without saying you can't change out the windows and, you know, you still got to maintain the same look of the building, I think is the intent, that we don't lose what it looks like now.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I, I, I don't want to put you or Jeff on the spot completely if it's not something we can resolve and, and y'all, y'all have worked on it for a little while now. So if it's something that you guys want to go back and work on again, we get that. Because I don't want your client to be hamstrung by the words and it being very, very unclear. And, but also at the same time, I hear what Jeff's saying too. We want, we want to make sure that the building is, is the character of that building is preserved and it's in the body of the building. But like you said, I don't want the, you know, somebody, you to have to go through four public hearings to get 10 windows replaced if they're broken. So there's-
Right. And, and that's been the dilemma at this point. But I think the positives are, the, I think the overall rezoning request is a positive. Of course, that's up to the board and ultimately city council. Again, I want to be respectful of everybody's time. I feel like maybe some additional time would be helpful. I think, I think we can come close to getting it worked out, but I did want to get direction from the commission or just, I guess, explain our concerns to the commission because we're, we just, we have some concerns with preservation and some of words that are open to interpretation. But I think the intent is there to keep the building, have the building remain, the, the street facing facades remain in substant, I would say substantial conformity with what they are now. Maybe some minor modifications, I, I don't know. I don't, but we, we would like the ability obviously to add on to the building and I think it will ultimately be a great development when the plan is created and, and that sort of thing. And as I said before, the, the real sort of, how this came about was to try to get some neighborhood type uses in that building rather than light industrial. So we think the UMX is really going to help the redevelopment of that site and we think it'll be a positive for the area. But we do want to get this right because we don't want to be in a situation where we're having to go back to city council and, and this commission to figure out what it means and change windows and, and basically become the equivalent of in the HPC.
Right.
Which is, that's a, nothing against that process at all, it's a fine process. It's just, we're, we're not in it and it's got some concerns with going down, down that way, the equivalent of that with this. So-
Mr. Nichols?
Yes, sir.
This is Commissioner Bowman speaking. If you are open to continuing, I would suggest that you look at the central business district language for modifying or selective demolition to contributing buildings and also the U.S. Secretary of Interior standards. I feel like if you were to become familiar with that and agree with one or the other, probably staff and commission would be fine with it. It would allow you to modify, add on, you know, alter secondary facades where you add on, replace windows with windows that are of similar design if they need to be replaced and all of these things that I think you would probably be open to. The one thing about the central business district language is it might, depending on how far you want to go up, if you want to expand vertically, it might restrict how much you go up. If you were to significantly demolish parts of the building, but if you abide by the rules, you can go to full by right height. And I, I think it meets all the things that you're talking about.
Well, I, I'm, I appreciate that suggestion, Commissioner Bowman, and I'll certainly look at those. And ultimately it's up to my client. So I, I do have to discuss it with my clients and see what they are willing to do. But, but I would stress that there is a reluctance to put a lot of conditions on this.
And, I mean, I'd be all right in just looking at amending language that would say preserve under the, the elements in those two exterior walls, preserve or repair with similar designed elements, you know, and, and not like require that there be a architecturally matching, identical system because old systems that worked 100 years ago don't work now very well. I, I mean, I think that's a very reasonable thing. So I, I, you know, if, if you want to continue on, on the fly, we can maybe find some language that would work, but I, I feel like it's going to be a little tricky to do.
I, I think so too. Again, I appreciate the commission's time for a second hearing on this. It is a, it is an important property. I think it's going to be a, I think it's going to be a really good development when it, when the plan is actually put together and this is really the first step in that. So we want to get this right. I think we're trying to honor what the city would like us to do, what we understand the city would like us to do with the building. It's just making sure that we were not overly restrictive with it. So with that being said, to the extent I'm allowed to ask for a continuance, I guess I would like to do that. And I don't know whether it's possible to ask for it to be continued till December.
Certainly.
I think, I think they'll give us some more time.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. We appreciate that. And again, I think all of us agree UMX is the right way to go and it's preserving the building's the right way. And I would rather you and Jeff, you know, you guys, your, your client, Jeff, staff, everyone get that language the way that everyone can agree with it so that it does become that great project that you want. But we appreciate your time and-
Thank you.
We'll listen to you 10 more times if we need to. So that, that's okay. Don't worry about that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. So we have a, we have a, have been asked by the applicant to continue this item, item number five, until the, this December second planning commission hearing. Before we take any action on that, though, I want to make sure, do we have anyone in here present to speak? No? And we only had the one, the one email, I think. I believe that's right. Okay. All right. So we will not open the public hearing tonight. We will, I will entertain a motion for the applicant's request of continuance to resolve some of the conditions.
Make a motion to approve the continuance to the December second meeting?
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Hovis to continue this item to the December second planning commission hearing. And I believe that second was by Commissioner Sharp. So we have a motion for approval and a second, and I will roll call this vote. So I will say Commissioner Lyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Hovis.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodruff.
Yes.
Commissioner Cortez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Collier, yes. So the motion to continue is approved seven to zero. And thank you all very much for working through that. I think it will be a great project when it's, when it's completed. All right, that, that ends our agenda items at this time. We did receive our annual report on the planning commission prepared for us. Is there any questions, comments on the, the presentation, the document, the information in it? I would say upfront that the staff did a phenomenal job with it. It really reads well. When you start looking back after this crazy year that we've had and, and being out, I guess, one or two meetings, it would, it looks like we've done, we've done a lot of work this year. So it's, it's commendable to all of you folks on the commission and then it's also commendable to staff for all the efforts that they've put into, to these projects. So questions on the documents? Glenn, do you want to talk through any of it?
No, I just wanted to echo your thoughts, Mr. Collier, in that when I see a report like this, it reminds me that the work that this commission does is among the most important jobs of any board of a city. And I commend the commission for your deliberations, for the way you work together. We will miss you and Mr. Hovis. You know, because Commissioner Lyle mentioned earlier this evening that there were literally thousands of Wilmington citizens that were involved in preparing the comprehensive plan. Essentially what you're doing every month is you're implementing the city's comprehensive plan, one project at a time. So it's very important work and this, this report that Mr. Chambers spearheads every year, as I understand it, is just tangible evidence of the importance of the work that you do. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Any, any questions from the commission? Any comments on, on the annual report from fiscal year 1920? All right, seeing none, let's see. The next thing is we have items from the commission. Is there anything from the commission that we want to bring up now or talk about? As, as, or is everybody done for the evening? How about items from the staff? Is there anything, any updates that we need to be aware of? Thanks to everyone for the joint work session on Monday for the CDMU. I thought that went really well, so it will move on to council's meeting this week for them to take action on. So maybe we'll get that one moved on, moved on to, so it'll be on next year's report. So, all right. If nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hovis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lyle. And all of those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Everybody's here. Good night, everyone. You all have a great, thank you.
Bye.